Okay, good morning. I'd like to call the September first twenty twenty City Council meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Here.
Soldner?
Here.
Bagwell?
Here.
Garza?
Here.
Pyrrhus de Carvallo?
Here.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this morning's prayer will be given by Pastor Kim Berry. Thank you.
Will you pray with me? Sustaining God, we give you thanks for the opportunity of a new day. As we look around the world, the hurricanes, violence, the pandemic, the chaos seems overwhelming. Yet you have told us to not fear and anxiously look around because you are God. Bring us your peace that does not depend on circumstances. Thank you, Lord, for leading today's meeting and giving wisdom to our leaders as they make decisions for the good of all. All this we ask in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
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 Okay, next item, please.
Item four A is the Fair Housing Month proclamation.
Okay, and will Ryan with planning, please join me at the podium? Whereas April eleven twenty twenty marked the fifty-second anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Act, Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight as amended, of which Title Eight declared that the law of the land would now guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunity, and whereas the principle of fair housing is not only national law and policy but a fundamental human entitlement, and whereas barriers that diminish the rights and limit the options of any citizen will ultimately diminish the rights and limit the options of all, and whereas the city of Hutchinson welcomes this opportunity to acknowledge the importance of fair and equal housing for all people without regard to race, religion, age, color, sex, disability, national origin, ancestry, or family status, and whereas equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in our city that can and should be achieved, now therefore I, Jade Pyrrhus de Carvallo, Mayor of the city of Hutchinson, Kansas, on behalf of its citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty twenty as Fair Housing Month and express the hope that this year's observance will promote fair housing practices throughout the city. Would you like to say anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, it's been an interesting year when it comes to housing in really nationwide. We've had Supreme Court rulings that have widened what the definition of protected classes are. We have, you know, fears about evictions and things like that. And so this is really just a really unique time to speak about fair housing, not just in the city of Hutchinson but nationwide with what the state Equal Rights Commission, you know, came out with a couple of weeks ago. It just really is very apropos that we have this today. So, thank you very much, Mayor, as Director of Planning and Development and over housing with also our Human Relations Officer. We just really want everybody to know that the city of Hutchinson does take fair housing very seriously and any complaints we will investigate and take care of. So, thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. And as always, if people have some challenges, they can always visit with Dejada Moore in our Human Relations office. Next item, please.
Item five A is petitions, remonstrances, and communications.
Okay, this is the time of the meeting that we set aside for people in the audience who would like to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Please approach the podium, state your name and address, and limit your remarks to five minutes.
Yes, my name is Michael Kirk. I live at three oh seven Walker Street. And I've got a question about why code enforcement is so unfair in picking shoes in this town.
Do you care to expand on that?
I have called the city on a neighbor who has a rotten fence and grass that is literally still this tall after three, four weeks. I can't get anybody to do anything. I get put to answering machines. No one calls me back. As she's turned me in for things, they come out, okay? And I got in trouble for not having siding on my house because I had Tyvek's on it too long. Yet there's a house one block east of me and one block west of me, particularly the one one block west of me that's been in Tyvek's for years, and they've never said anything. And I talked to Andrew Becker, and he pretty much told me that unless someone turns somebody in, that they'll drive right by and they won't do anything about a code enforcement.
Yeah, I think that's the challenge we run into is, you know, when you when you have limited staffing, it is difficult to apply those codes uniformly. That was one of the, I think, hesitations we had in passing the International Property Maintenance Code. We wanted to be sure that that was applied fairly. I would like to-
I'm having problems with this fence thing, and they they signed off. I had to go to court over some of this fence that I tore down. And I talked to Andrew Becker the day before we went to court, and he was out and showed him all this stuff. And her grass, the only thing that got done was her grass is mowed. She's got a chicken coop stuck between her house and this rotten fence. She's raising rabbits. She got chickens. She's got a rotten, I mean, it is a rotten fence. I've had three different contractors say that needs to be just tore down. I can't touch the fence or I get in trouble. I've got nails sticking out on my side this far. You know, I can't even let my dogs run that part of the area because they get all skinned up by these nails sticking out the fence. But yet I can't get anything done about it. I can't get anyone. This Trent and all of them, they keep switching me around to somebody else, and I leave a message and they don't call me back. Fencing is planted. Chickens and, but but planning isn't code enforcement. And when the code enforcement's out there and they see these violations, they signed off on this piece of fence in between my house and said there was nothing wrong with it when Andrew told me it looked like it needed to be tore down. But he told me his boss Trent said, "Sign off on it."
That sounds like a really frustrating experience. And I would suggest you leave that address in question with us. We'll pass it along to the city manager.
I got tons of pictures. I can't get anyone even to look at the pictures. I had this trouble in court. No one wants to look at these pictures. Everybody says, "Take pictures. Have video." Da-da-da-da-da. So far, it's done me no good, period.
Well, we we have had some staffing changes recently in that department, and we know a lot-
Yeah, John John Ritter, when he was doing it, because that's who got me on my deal, he literally walked in this lady's yard with a foot of grass so he could look over into the neighbor's yard. And she had a dilapidated building and all kinds of code violations and never done a thing about any of that.
Yeah, I am, I'm disappointed to hear that you've had so many problems.
I'm mad because I tried to call. I don't have time to call every single day and get sent to someone's voicemail and no one ever returns the call.
No, you don't. And that's not the level of service that we're committed to providing our citizens.
Taxes is like everybody else does around here.
Absolutely.
And I'm trying to fix my place up, and this lady is trying to get me in trouble every time I move. So, I mean, when you live in a glass house, you shouldn't be throwing stones at everybody else.
Mike, I think I think there is some fault here at the city level, and I think we need to accept that responsibility.
Will somebody take these pictures and at least look at it?
Yes, we we will, and we'll-
We need to forward this on to the city manager, and he has been-
Mr. Kirk, what's your phone number?
My phone number is six two oh nine six oh six eight eight eight.
I will contact Mr. Kirk.
And I'll guarantee you, after you see these pictures of this fence, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about.
I'm the city attorney, and I'll call you and contact you. We'll make an arrangement to get together.
I'd just like someone to come out and just look at it and either tell me, "No, there's nothing we can do about it," or "Yes, you are right. This fence is bad."
Okay, sounds good. Well, thanks for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council?
Who should I lead?
City Attorney would be great. Okay. Okay, hearing none. Next item, please.
Item six A through C is the consent agenda.
There are comments or a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Pyrrhus de Carvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item seven A is to consider the ordinance amending sections twenty-seven dash eight oh seven and twenty-seven eight twelve of the city of Hutchinson code.
Good morning. Amy Allison, Senior Planner. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, before you today is a zoning amendment request to amend the ordinance for section twenty-seven eight oh seven and twenty-seven eight twelve, which refers to our public and institutional signage and then our residential street standards for signage. Well, they're going. I can continue. So, just some brief history. In twenty eighteen, the city of Hutchinson amended our sign ordinance to be in conformance with a Supreme Court decision, Gilbert versus Reed. Really, what the what that decision was was sign ordinances cannot be content-based. They have to be place-based. So, we amended our code to be more reflective of the street in which a sign sits on as opposed to the type of use that the sign is advertising. So, what you'll see on twenty-seven eight oh seven is our table that designates the sign height and area that's allowed per street classification of the frontage the sign will be placed on. There we go. Okay. However, in the middle of reviewing a sign permit application, there was a potential issue that came forward. Luminous Neon was the applicant. There is a church that is located on Main Street, which is an arterial street within the city of Hutchinson, that wanted to construct a six and a half foot sign. However, the current code, instead of saying that that sign's height and area is based off the street classification, it said any PI zoning district or use is based off of the standards for a residential multifamily. So, the maximum height they could have is six feet. So, after discussing it via staff and bringing it before the Planning Commission, we determined that we don't feel that that ordinance is actually reflective of what it should be. So, we brought forward this request, amend the ordinance, to make it more place-based like the rest of the code is. So, as you can see, the current standards for a PI sign, the maximum area is sixty-four square feet and the maximum height is six feet. I did want to make one point. There was some, an article written about this ordinance request, and they they made some suggestions that weren't exactly right. The only thing changing about this table is the fact that we separated out residential and non-residential other. So, there are two separate lines in the table now. And then the only other thing that's changing is we're changing the maximum height for any signage that would be on a residential street to ten feet instead of twenty. That's because we want to make sure that the signage that is on a residential street is more reflective of the character of that street as opposed to more of a commercial or industrial-type nature. So, our recommendation is to bring that down to ten feet. So, for comparison, any other signage that's allowed in a residential use or district is six feet. So, if a if a church is going on a, that is on a residential street, would like to construct a sign, they can still have a sign that's taller than what anything else in that street can be. However, it's not twenty feet tall, which is, in many neighborhoods, going to be taller than the houses that sit within that neighborhood. So, we just want to bring that back into context of the design environment around it. And then the second change is changing what PI standards would be used for signage. So, if a, say, for example, going along with this example of a church on a residential street, so instead of the six feet, sixty-four square foot maximum area they can have for a sign now, they can now have a sign that's ten feet tall or a hundred square feet in area. If they're on a non-residential street, so not on an arterial or collector, but like in our industrial parks, those would be prime examples of a non-residential street, they can have a twenty-foot-tall sign or a hundred-square-foot-in-area sign. If they're on a collector, it stays the same, twenty-five feet, a hundred and fifty square feet in area. And then arterial is again the same, too, twenty-five feet, a hundred and fifty square feet. With one exception. Because the PI standard applies to not only those properties on PI, but also properties that are PI uses. So, we're talking churches, schools, things of that nature. We do know that specifically on corner lots, they have an interesting dichotomy. A lot of them are that transition property between commercial and residential. So, essentially what it's saying is if you're, if the sign is going on the commercial side, so it's along the arterial, you know, right-of-way, you can have the highest standard. But if you're going to locate it on the side that's along the residential street or this that transition area between commercial residential, we want a fifty percent reduction. So, for example, if the street is also residential, or sorry, arterial or collector, and it doesn't meet these factors, meaning that they're more than five acres, they're not located on a collector or arterial, and it's not adjacent to residential street, they can go under the same standard as every other sign. But if they don't meet these factors, then we're asking for a fifty percent reduction in heights. So, they can keep the one hundred and fifty square feet and the, but the height would have to be reduced to twelve and a half instead of the twenty-five feet. Again, just trying to create that transition between commercial and residential and being respectful of the surroundings in which these signs are being placed. So, is there any questions on that?
Amy, I had one question, actually. I think it was on the former slide. When you're reducing the maximum height in residential to ten feet, are there any signs currently in the city that don't conform to that new standard that if they were needing to be upgraded in the future would have trouble with that process?
So, that's a good question. We didn't do an in-depth analysis. Really, it's hard to track all the signs that's in town. But what we're talking about residential streets is, these are residential streets. They're not, you know, commercial streets that might have some houses. The predominant use along these streets are residential, and they're not considered arterial or collector. But what our sign ordinance does have is a pretty progressive non-conformance standard. So, what it's saying is if you have an existing sign on your property, from here until perpetuity, you are allowed to maintain that sign height and sign area, even if you were to take that sign down and replace it with a new sign.
Okay.
So, essentially, the sign height, sign area is grandfathered for that property until the end of time.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, we did have two study sessions for this amendment on July fourteenth and twenty-eighth. We had the public, the hearing was held August eleventh. Really, no comments were received. The Planning Commission did approve the ordinance on amendment, ordinance amendment on a vote of nine to zero. So, that's really the end of my presentation. I do know that Cindy Prohet with Luminous Neon is here. She was pretty part of the whole process and helped us form the language, so.
Cindy, did you want to make any comments or?
No.
But I'll talk.
Cindy Prohet with Luminous Neon, fourteen twenty-nine West Ford. I really don't have any comments. I just was here in case there any questions came up. But we've been really happy to work with staff and are happy with the direction this has gone. So, hopefully, hopefully it will allow those properties that are sitting on arterial streets to to get a little bit better height of signage and be more more comparable to their neighbors and so. So, if there are any questions, I think we're-
Cindy, you don't you don't view this as any any more restrictive than our current sign ordinance with these proposed changes?
No, actually, I think it should open up a little bit better. So, we're talking, you know, this happens to be First Baptist Church that we were working with. And if you go by, the monument is actually already built. And so, six feet going down Main on that kind of property is really quite small when you get looking at it. And so, this is just going to allow for properties to have a little bit better signage. If you think about any churches around town on arterial streets, Thirtieth Street, Plum Street, they would have been restricted to six feet in height. And so, this is going to open up the door and allow them a little bit more. This actually would impact HCC, the sports arena. So, we think this is just kind of going in a little bit better direction while still maintaining the aesthetics that you're going for in the residential areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Anyone in the audience who would like to comment?
I would move to approve an ordinance amending section twenty-seven dash eight oh seven and twenty-seven dash eight twelve of chapter twenty-seven of the code of the city of Hutchinson and authorize the mayor to sign.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Pyrrhus de Carvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item A-
Thank you, Amy.
Is to consider their, have the reports from the city council.
Okay, let's start with you, Sarah.
I really don't have anything this morning other than, I really don't have anything.
Okay. Do you have anything, Steve?
No, I really don't have anything either, just that I'm doing well.
Good.
Going through, working with the prison. So far, I've done good without getting it yet.
Yeah, knock on wood. That's unfortunate situation there.
Yes.
Okay, John, what do you have?
Oh, I have nothing this morning.
Okay, Nancy?
Nothing.
Okay. I had a couple of questions for Ryan since you're here. I'm glad you're here. Thank you. One thing we had discussed at the last city council meeting was the opportunity to open up public areas or right-of-ways or driveways for businesses that are interested in extending outdoor dining options or even shopping options. And when I reached out to you, you mentioned that you felt like the rules we have in place might already offer that opportunity. So, I wondered if you could talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, certainly in our downtown area, our zoning district, in our downtown district allows for sidewalk uses, outdoor dining, those type of things. Really, in the rest of our districts, it does as well. Our only real stipulation is you can't block a fire lane. You can't block the minimum required parking. And a couple of years ago, the city did reduce our parking standards to, so yeah, I do actually believe that, yes, if a business wanted to do that, they certainly would be able to. We would still run through the fire department to make sure they're not blocking any fire lane or any circulation issues. But it's something that we certainly think we don't need to do an ordinance change or anything for. We think our current ordinances and the city attorneys reviewed our ordinances as well and believes that, that, yeah, we are in a good position that we would be able to have a business if they wanted to do that, would be able to do that.
Wonderful. So, if a business is interested in that opportunity, they would just reach out to you or Amy?
Yep, absolutely. Just reach out to my department. We can take a look at the site and work with them on a location that would work well for them to be able to do that. So, absolutely.
Wonderful.
Very happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. And then the other item I had was the CDVGCV grants and whether or not the daycare opportunities have been opened yet.
Yes, actually, I'm working on that here this morning and anticipate that's actually going to probably go out to the public this afternoon.
Okay.
So, that would be that we, if you remember back in, I guess it would have been late June, the the city council did set aside part or allocated part of our CDVGCV funds for just daycare, childcare providers. And so, yes, we are opening that up, a micro grant of, I believe, the maximum is twenty-five hundred dollars. And the closing date on that would be September fifteenth, and we will have that posted by the end of the day for folks, so.
I had a question on that, sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
If a daycare, let's say, maybe hadn't had a reduction in childcare, the incurred expenses for like hand sanitizer, wipes, extra cleaning and all that, would they still qualify even though their head count had not necessarily went down?
Yes, that is that they possibly would be able to qualify for those. The CDVGCV funds can be used for, I believe the wording is preparation or response to the coronavirus. So, yes, if they have incurred costs for, you know, hand sanitizer, purchasing PPE, those type of things, that that would be an allowed expense.
Okay, thank you. And those who have experienced a reduction in head count can use it for rent, utilities?
Utilities. They could use it for payroll, those type of things. There are some stipulations if they got some other federal funds that we have to make sure they're not double-dipping. But, yes, certainly, the only other stipulation, and unfortunately, this is this is from the feds, this is not from the city, is that it has to be a business, a for-profit institution. So, unfortunately, nonprofits would not be eligible. But I do know that the county is trying to work through some of those issues with some of their Spark funds that they received from the state. So, we're trying trying to cover everybody, but yes, unfortunately, this grant is only for businesses.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Ryan.
You're very welcome.
I had a couple items related to parks, but I forgot to ask Justin to be here, so I'm going to do my best to try to cover them. We did have a meeting with USD three oh eight to discuss a pickleball solution for outdoor courts. And for the time being, we are going to, USD three oh eight has been very gracious in allowing us to tape off some of their courts on severance for pickleball playing until they have their regionals. At that point, the tape will be pulled up and the city will pay to replace it. And we are planning on doing this until we can broker some kind of compromise with the Hutch Rec to have indoor courts at the sports arena accessible without a drop-in fee. So, we'll be we'll be meeting with them as well. And then, you know, long-term, we need to have a greater discussion about what we want to do for a permanent outdoor solution. But without Justin here, I don't want to try to get into the details of what that might entail because I know it's costly and and he's the expert in that realm. And I was contacted by residents near Orchard Park again. They're curious as to when we'll be moving forward with a solution for for that area that we also discussed at the last meeting. So, I told them conversations are still ongoing between Chief and our IT department and Parks and that when we have a few recommendations, we'll be presenting that to the residents in that area before we move forward. So, with that, I will turn it over to city attorney.
I actually don't have anything.
Well, this is like my record. Yeah, go ahead.
If you don't mind, I did want to also put the final plug in for the census.
Oh, yes.
We are trying a very hard push. September thirtieth is the the federal deadline of when the count is actually going to wrap up. So, we've lost a month. It was originally going to be October thirty-first. We're doing fairly well in the city. We're still under what we want for the response rate. But we do have census takers that are out there knocking on doors. But there's still an opportunity for people to fill out their census online, and that can be done at mytwentytwencensus.gov. We really, really are trying to get a very good count. The county and the city are working together to get that final push. You may have seen some signs out and about in the community, and it really is vitally important. We want to make sure that we get a good count because every household that we miss, the city stands to miss out on about forty-nine thousand dollars of of federal funding over the next ten years. So, we miss ten households, we're we're looking at, you know, five hundred thousand dollars in federal funding that we may miss out on. So, very, very important, and if anyone has any questions, they can contact the city. But it's very simple, ten minutes, ten questions, and you're done. So, thank you.
What is our percentage response rate?
As of, let's see, they're always a little slow to update it after the weekends. But we're at about just under sixty-nine percent of response rates. That would be that folks who have filled out the survey or have done it online.
That would be that folks who have filled out the survey or have done it online. But when you actually include the door knocking, we're about eighty-seven percent.
Oh, okay, so we're getting there.
We're getting there, but, yeah, the census has to get to a hundred percent and they're working hard. But, you know, the other thing I want to also mention is that, you know, the census enumerators are people that live in our community. So, you know, we want to make sure we're keeping them safe as well. So, the best way to do that is fill it out online, so you don't have to have someone knock on your door and have that face-to-face contact.
Yeah, alright, well, thank you so much for that and your work to get an accurate count. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Pyrrhus De Carvallo?
Yes.